Okay, I'm gonna call the planning commission meeting for March 14th, 2022 to order. Roll call. Yesme here. Johnson?
Here.
Emma?
Here.
Christensen is absent. Montgomery?
Here.
Is, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thereas. Approval of minutes, the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes from last meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thereas. Public input, is there a public input sheet? Anybody signing on that?
Lost.
Lost the front page somewhere.
Sign there, we need nothing for that.
So it looks like there's nobody here for public input, so we're just gonna waive that part. Public hearing, conditional use permit for PID 52530010 for truck terminal business. I'll open the public hearing, Diane, you wanna give us the details?
Okay, I'm gonna break down 152648W, which is the truck terminal conditional use permit. Number one, vehicular access points shall be located along arterial streets and should be limited and designed and constructed to create a minimum of conflict with through traffic movement and shall be subject to approval of the city engineer. On this one, vehicle access points pending per application and approval from Goodhue County and MinDOT for said access points. Number two, a drainage system subject to the approval of city engineer shall be installed. Staff finds that drainage system plans are pending will require approval of city engineer in MinDOT. Number three, storage areas are landscaped fenced and screened from view of neighboring uses, abutting residential zoning districts and public right-of-way in compliance with 152278 of this chapter. Landscaping, fencing, and screening, staff approves waiving fencing in exchange for fully adhering to all landscaping requirements listed in 152648W 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4D, and 152278. Staff strongly suggests screening on the corner of 63rd Avenue and 64th Avenue adjacent to residential property 32443 64th Avenue Way, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. I do wanna add one little thing in there, we probably should make sure that if there is screening there that it adheres to the site visibility triangle. Number four, at the boundaries of the lot, the following landscaped area should be required. Landscaping, staff approves with full compliance to all requirements in 152648W 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, and 152278 as noted on the landscaping plan. Number five, traffic site visibility shall be maintained in compliance with 152186 of this chapter. Traffic site visibility, staff recommends approval of site plan. Number six, provisions are made to control and minimize noise, air, and water pollution. Staff finds minimize noise, air, and water pollution, staff recommends approval if all conditions are addressed. Number seven, crude oil, gasoline, or other liquid storage tanks as an accessory use, not for providing service to the general public, provided that items A through G describing the location and restrictions regarding storage tanks. There will not be any storage tanks located on this site, so that is not a problem. Number eight, all storage and parking areas are blacktopped or concrete-surfaced unless specifically approved by city council. Surfacing, staff will not recommend approval without meeting all of the requirements of ordinance 375 passed May 20th, 2021. A low and gravel pavement on this project would set a precedent for all building projects in the city of Cannon Falls moving forward. This ordinance was passed in part due to runoff concerns which caused city catch basins to fill up. Staff feels that it would be difficult to enforce this ordinance with other projects in the future if we waive this requirement now. Number nine, all lighting shall be in compliance with 152187 of this chapter or other lighting standards in place at the time of project approval. A comprehensive lighting plan shall be submitted as part of the conditional use permit application. Maximum illumination shall not exceed four tenths-foot candle at ground level when measured at any boundary line with an adjoining property or any public property. Lighting, staff recommends approval of the lighting plan as presented. Number 10, there was an engineering report enclosed, all engineering requests will have to be met for final staff approval. You're welcome.
Anybody wanna speak in the public hearing?
Hello, my name's Alex Burlick, I'm from Rochester, Minnesota. I work for SEH, I represent Central Trucking and submitted the CUP application on the behalf. I'll just give you a little background to, in addition to what Diane has already said. So, the owners are looking to build two buildings on the site, so one is gonna be a 6,000-square-foot building, another 10,000-square-foot building. The 6,000-square-foot building, the primary function will be is the office for Central Trucking, so about a third of the building will serve for that purpose. The rest of the building will be a storage area that will be for storing equipment as it's unloaded from trailers and then reloaded into the new trailers as they come in. The 10,000-square-foot building is gonna be used for maintenance of trucks, for semi-trucks and for semi-truck trailers, so that's the primary function of the property is for the maintenance of those vehicles. And that docking section of the 6,000-square-foot building, so when a truck comes in, it's got a full load, trailer is unusable, they unload into that room, swap it out with a new trailer, put the equipment back in, and then they go while their trailer gets fixed, so. The north portion of the site is for that operation, for the maintenance operation. The southern portion of the site is for trailer storage. So there's an ordinance that was passed where their current operation is in the cities, where they're not allowed to store semi-truck trailers outside anymore, so therefore they're looking for a new place to move some of that stuff, so they're looking to move that to the southern portion, as Diane did recommend, so you guys are recommending for that to be a bit two-minutes pavement. The owners were requesting that if there is an option to allow that to be gravel, I know the timing isn't really nice, but had this been done over a year ago, it perhaps would have been acceptable, so I wonder if the commissioners could take that in mind as if the timing wasn't when it was when the ordinance was passed, it would be acceptable within the old code. Also, with the stormwater BMPs and what's shown on the grading plan, there is very minimal risk of there being any runoff from the gravel parking lot and entering into the city system because of the BMPs require the filtr- or the, they require separation of the sediments and sales before it is allowed to go off-site for the current MPC requirements, and the site will all, well, by requirement, it's supposed to drain to those BMPs, so as it is a green site. So its discharge must meet the current condition of the site. I think that's about it, I guess, if there's anything else that the commissioners have or if the public has any other questions, I guess I'd just like to be available if anybody has any.
Steve, I have one comment. Neil and I did discuss this and would be willing to recommend phasing of the parking lot where half of it would be surfaced and the other half would remain grass until they would be able to finish the surfacing.
Any comments from the public? For the second call, any other comments from the public? Third call, is there any comments from the public? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Committee. Discussion.
A question for Diana and Neil. If we, and I guess for the business too, if we phased it in for half surfaced and then the other half would remain grass so that it would not be able to be available for parking?
Exactly, yes.
And then, when the finances are such, pave the other half?
Exactly, if you're okay with that, yeah.
Is that?
It's not as desired, but yes, as an alternative approach, if that's something that's necessary, that's something we can discuss. All the stormwater BMPs would be constructed, or the plans would be as such as if it was the full build condition, so we would likely still build out the BMPs required for stormwater. And then, as, you know, such time comes where the finances are available or for the business, if it is available to pave, they would then do so, so, but it would all be permitted at the, with the final site plans, as long as that's okay with staff as well.
Would you likely start with the two buildings and the north half be paved and then the southern half, or how would you phase it in?
Likely, I would imagine, we haven't really discussed that yet, as the owners are currently out of the country, but yeah, that's likely what would happen. There'd be a portion of that that would be paved right away, I would think, because there is an immediate need for some of that, but not for the full build-out, so that's something that might have to take place over time.
The only reason it's a concern for us not to have part of it gravel is because we have other businesses that are kinda watching, and they've already said they will comply with the improvised surface, so we don't wanna tell them they have to and tell you it's okay not to, so that's why we thought if you would keep it in grass until you can...
Yeah, no, that's understandable, I know this was kind of an uphill battle as we started, so.
Yeah.
It's a little unfortunate on the timing side of things.
Any other comments?
Would there be any future plans of more than just a trucking port, or is this going to be the buildings for offices and for working on the trucks and then just storing, or would there be any ideas for the future, or is this the main purpose?
There's talks of potentially expansion on the maintenance facility building, but that's the only building that would likely expand. I don't think that they would expand the docking building or the office building based on what they've said so far.
So, it's gonna be a lot of cross-docking, is that what you're gonna be doing?
What's that?
Cross-docking, like Holland?
A little bit, it's not a primary function, there's only two dock doors that serve for that kinda cross-docking, so it's not, yeah, it's most of the time the trucks, there's a, they can service six tractor trucks at the same time, and then only, they can only service two full truck and trailers, based on what they've got for design for a building right now.
Thank you.
Okay, question, do you have, are you gonna have your own fuel there?
No.
Any other hazardous materials we should know about, other than lubricants?
Yeah, the typical things you'd see for maintenance on a truck.
And what's the timeframe for the first phase, once you start?
Spring construction, so they would likely be in operation by fall.
By fall, and that would be one-third of your, of your space, or one-half?
That, we haven't, hasn't been discussed yet.
You're not sure how far you're gonna, but the buildings will come in first?
The buildings will be a part of the first phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, because if, if the purpose of moving out of where you're currently located is because they won't allow you to store the trailers there anymore, is there gonna be enough room on half the lot for the storage you need?
Their, their current lot is a lot smaller, so I would think that that would be sufficient for what they have, so this is a much larger site than their current site in Minneapolis.
Maybe I didn't understand, all the trailers will be empty?
Some, I would assume so, I mean, I don't know how many people are making money off of full trailers sitting in a parking lot.
But you have to know what's in those trailers when you park.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, you understand my concern, if you have something come up, are our facilities able to deal with any, you know, things that might come up?
Absolutely, yeah, no, yeah, no, I would assume that they would, I would assume they'd be empty and still locked, just for, you know, safety concerns.
You deal with propane trucks? No gas trucks?
I don't believe so, it's mostly freight.
Pardon me?
Freight trailers.
Freight trailers, okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
And that, that is with the condition of half grass?
With the grass, yep.
Or anything that's not paved, remain grass.
Right. Thank you for mentioning that.
It's good to say it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion thereas. Okay, thank you. That's all that was on the meeting docket, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so, next item would be a discussion of concept plan for Winchell subdivision, So, we did discuss this a little bit at the finance committee meeting, and I think we have talked you into looking at maybe coming off of Highway 20 for the, for the right-of-way The only other thing I wanna say is that if not, I guess I am sticking with our ordinance as proposed, and that would be to pave, I would, I would suggest to the city council myself that I would have them pave, but not curb and gutter, from...
Are you looking for this one?
Yes, here it is, nope, this one might be a separate one. From Mensing Way up to the two proposed new structures, but we also, holler at me if I say anything wrong so far. I've said everything wrong, as far as you're concerned, but you are, we asked you to maybe look at coming across from 20 on that, what do we call in that road?
Private drive currently.
Yeah, current private.
Coming from Highway 20.
Yep, which should shorten up your...
Our ask here is that, you know, we've been told that we need to pave this road, so that private drive is paved, coming off of Highway 20 up into that second house, and then we would have to, according to the code currently, is we'd have to pave a short section of what's we call Fifth Street, it's not recognized as a road, but then all the way up to the house.
Up to the cul-de-sac.
Which is cost prohibitive, so, we are on board putting in a gravel road with a gravel cul-de-sac, making it accessible to anybody who needs to get up there, emergency vehicles, but we cannot pave it, that road's been there forever, city uses it daily, numerous times per day, so that's our ask, is that we don't have to pave it. We're looking to put two houses back there, so minimal traffic coming out. Our preference is to take Fifth Street, which would be back down by Gemini, back behind Darien, and come out that way, that'd be our preference. It is a private drive, so we'd have to talk to the neighbors who are all on that private drive to come out that direction.
Oh, one other thing I wanna say, and it sounds like redundant, but there's another project in the city that's looking to see what we decide on this, and they're gonna come to us with guns ablazin', saying, "You did it for them, we want it," and it's already in place, so we gotta be very, very careful what we do here, very careful.
To me, that road currently exists, and the gravel road that we're gonna put in, leading back to the homes with the cul-de-sac, we, the engineer has a stormwater retention plan for all that, there's gonna be a pond, so there's a plan for water, it's just from, we're connected to Fifth Street, down the hill towards that existing home and down to Gemini, you know, we're not planning for a stormwater plan there or paving that, paving any of it, really, we're, we're okay paving the driveway up near the house, but we, we thought we could do a right-of-way up the field and down on Fifth Street, that was our hope, and I know that's not what it shows in that code, so that's our ask.
Got a question for you guys. It's my understanding that we don't recognize that as a road, it was not originally platted, so technically what we've always called Fifth Street and then the field road that leads up to the wellhead, those are not technically roads.
That's correct.
Does that add to this problem?
It does.
So, regardless of, let's not go down to the paving part yet, let's just say we have to replat this to consider it a road, a city road.
That's correct.
If we were to do that, I know this is maybe unconventional, but if we use that road with our public works to get up to the wellhead and that field road, which I would call a field road, if we were to split cost with paving up to that, I don't wanna set a bad precedent for any other developer, but this is also an extremely unique circumstance, and we take into account, we've talked about housing as our, probably one of our number-one concerns, we have residents who are looking to expand housing in our town, we're all for that. However, I'm hesitant because I don't want to go against any ordinances to open a door for other developers to then push that way. However, I'd like to see if there's a way we could make this work, following the rules. Is that unheard of, to say that we were to try to split it up to the cul-de-sac because our vehicles use that road? It, we replat it to make it officially a city road, we plow it up until the cul-de-sac, they obviously still have to have their driveway, like Jake said, and we would still have that, I don't know if you'd say right-of-way to get up near their house and then use that to get over to the trail to get up to the wellhead, but it would be considered a city street up until that point.
The money has got no ordinances wrote on it. If you wanted to pay for the whole thing, you could pay for the whole thing. What we're saying is, there's no right-of-way starting at Downby where Gemini turns in, that's the end of the Fifth Street right-of-way, and we have to make a right-of-way going all the way up till it hits the, the top of the bluff, or the bottom of the bluff. Now, who pays for it is another decision. Ordinance-wise, houses have to abut a right-of-way and an improved street, and approved street is blacktop or concrete, and so the paying of who's gonna pay for it, you kinda gotta look at the cost-benefit ratio of it.
Well, I feel like we as a city, sorry to get in front of you, but we as a city might be in a dangerous spot either way, because if we pay half for a road for two residents, if there's anybody else that jumps in and says, "Hey, I've got this land in this area, and I'm gonna put two houses there, but hey, city, pay half of it, I'll go halvesies with ya." However, the only, the only thing to me that seems like there's a sliver is that we use that road, our public works, that is a road that we use, so I don't think we're as dangerous to say it should be a city road.
That's, would be up to a council decision that, because that's not, that's not breaking any ordinances, you know, that's a, that's a finance thing.
Yeah, and tonight is just discussion, correct? We don't, we don't need, this is just to start working the, okay.
So, what we're looking at tonight is, how do we get this done with the ordinance that are in, in place as we speak?
Mm-hmm.
The, the rules or our ordinances state that any lot has to abut an approved city street on a right-of-way. It's, uh, a right-of-way in this area is a long ways away.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so it's, 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 it's hard, and we've talked about this for a long, long time, and hours worth of staff meetings, and, and talking with Dr. Carl, and, and Jim Burkhart, and people that, and Luke, it's been a struggle, um, so I don't know what about the, the financial side of it, like I said, it's the cost-benefit of it all, it's, uh, how long would, uh, the taxes, uh, they say it's, I don't know if they spend, if it was fifteen thousand per house, or whatever it is, we get a third of that, so we get five, um, how long would it take to pay for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, whatever it is, worth of street? So it's, 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 that's what the council's gotta weigh in, when they get that request.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I assume there's no plans in the future of making it like a, a development of putting two or three houses off that same road?
Right, that's the size of those lots, we want a big lot, so we could kinda have some privacy, we wanna be in town, we go for bike rides all the time, we like to be on the edge of town, we wanna put in a house with potentially a pool and stuff like that down the road, along those lines, man, I like, like the way you're thinking, is, is the piece that we can look at, the paving it though, if the city uses currently a gravel road to get back there, and then a dirt road to get up to the well, does it, can a gravel, can a gravel road work there? That's a pavement, split in the cost of paving, and we would pay for the gravel up that field road, we have a cost for that already, we have a code for it, um...
I'm, I'm more afraid of that, simply because of the precedent we would allow for other developers, that, and I, I understand where you're coming from, um, I wish we could make that happen, I, I'm not comfortable with that, because I feel like other developers would immediately step in and say, "Your road requirements for so-and-so", um, and I don't know if we have anything to, I, field road versus city street, uh, minimum maintenance, gravel, all those things, it's like, is it, what wiggle room do we have, to try to make it work with, with staying within the lines here?
Not a lot. It's, uh, you know, our code is pretty clear. Our code is pretty clear, um, any home has to abut a public right-of-way with an improved street, improved is concrete or patuminous, um, there's also a lot of other things that we looked at, you know, doing flag lots and, and things like that, but we can't do them either, cause that's in our code, so there was a, I don't know how long it was, it was a couple hours worth of staff meetings we held with, uh, with these folks, and we knocked a lot of it around, we found some more information after the fact, which, um, unfortunately for Luke, uh, it, it wasn't in his favor, and, but, you know, when, as staff, we have to abide by the, by the, uh, by the rules, and the rules are, um, now who pays for it, that's, that will be entirely up to a, a council that, um, looks at this, and, and to be honest with you, does it become then a, um, city project? Cause it may, if we're gonna pay for it, we've gotta do it our way.
Right, right.
So...
What would the cost be if we asked you to pay for, I, I know you're, you're basically saying it's a deal breaker, but what are we, what are we talking?
You know, I don't know, I, we haven't got a quote on payment, I do know from other people that put in shorter road than that, and I think he did curb and gutter, but it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, much shorter road, but I think he did curb and gutter, so...
And, and that's just the driveway, or the?
Improved road.
Okay.
Then throw in house construction costs, so you're saying that it's, that's the deal-breaker?
Right, right, we know it's unique, you know, it's costing a lot of money to get utilities up there, we got, like I said, we got a number for that, we're willing to do it on that utility cost, but the, the, the road now is just the deal-breaker for us.
Can I, in, in the map that we have, on the far piece over here, is that where the green home development are going?
Yep, yep.
Right on?
Greensmith, the Greensmith builders, yep.
Hayes.
Right over here, then?
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, is this whole area open, we're thinking for homes, residential, or?
But that's city limits right there, isn't it?
No.
The dark line?
No, city limits goes all the way up, does it not? Yeah, cause...
Oh, really, okay.
I mean, I was just trying to think if there was more of development going up there.
Theoretically...
But this land is Dr. Molnar's, correct?
Yes.
So it's what he wants to do with it, and if he's saying Hayes is developing here, and Winchells and Hansel, uh, Hanson's can develop right here, but this would still, this is not in play as of yet?
That's...
Right?
...uphill to Gemini.
Yep, and this is to the north of Gemini.
I mean, because if we look to that also being developed, then that's gonna have an access problem.
Then you guys have a neighborhood, and that's not what you're looking for, is it?
Yeah, I don't wanna speak for Dr. Molnar, but I, I do know that he has no interest in developing it, he's talked to some people who are interested in it, and it wouldn't be for development.
Maybe a silly question, but the farmer who works it, they have, I, I know that it's Dr. Molnar's land, so...
Actually, yeah, they, they rent it.
Do you have any?
Keith Gesmey runs it.
So, what, just, I mean, I'm sometimes taking in the farmer's opinion, or if they say it's their land, we'll, we'll do it until they sell it, and if they sell it, great, and that's, okay.
But you guys knew this was a reach when you put it out here, right?
Well, we've had lots of conversations with...
Yeah, it's obvious, you knew you were pushing the envelope.
You know, uh, five years ago, we built a house just around the other side of the bluff, and we put in a four-hundred-foot gravel driveway, and we split it, and that was different, I think, different administration, I think, um, so we made it work five years ago.
And I appreciate you trying to find a way to make it work, but the city's not gonna go for the whole bill.
We're not asking for a bill, we're asking for...
No, but they're not gonna be able to put a road in for you.
We're not even asking that, there is an existing gravel path, Fifth Street, and we have a, we have a, we have a bid for somebody who will put in a gravel driveway through that field back to where our house is.
Are you talking out to the west, or to the south, or what, which way are you going?
On the, on the map, he's talking about that, that's not, the orange is not currently a, a road.
That's a path now.
Right.
Right.
That the city uses to service the well, that's it.
It's a service road.
Yes, and Jake is saying they've got the quote to make that a gravel road.
From, yeah.
From where it stands.
And there's, and there's no other avenue for us to approach these houses, other than that way?
Well...
We're gonna go by the Molnar house.
Option, yes, right.
What's that?
You can also take it...
From 20?
Yeah, from 20, go past the, go through the mall, that's not...
Yeah, you could, you could really zigzag it around if you wanted to.
Yeah.
So you knew it was a reach?
No, no, we didn't know it was a reach, in fact, last, a week ago, Friday, I left city hall here, thinking, "This is gonna work, we're gonna do this".
I'm sure they're trying everything they can to make it work.
They were, they asked, they worked very hard, and then they, you know, they, they found out some more information, and then they said they had to be paid.
But now they're seeing that it might not be.
Yeah, absolutely not, not a reach, we wanna put in a nice home with some land, maybe a pool, nowhere else in the city can involve a reach.
Can't deny anybody that, you know, but, yeah.
Would you be willing to take a look at that other option? Before we, before we act on anything?
What was the option again? Going out, the private drive here, right?
Off of 20?
So look...
That was, you know, we've been working on this so long, that was one of the plans, um, the thing is then, we have to get an easement through another chunk of property, maybe it's on your map there, to connect to the private drive, cause we can't touch Fifth Street.
Well, it's not an easement, it would be a...
Well, we would need an easement.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
By, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the way our driver's gonna go, is gonna come down the field road, then jet west.
Yeah.
Cause it couldn't touch Fifth Street, and had to get to the private drive out here, and then we'd have to ask existing homeowners, um, which is, you know, a couple other families, if we can use their private drive to take it out to Highway 20.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And, but still easily paid.
Yeah.
It's just, my guess, by looking at this, if you went that way, it's a shorter road, is that, I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands, if it's half, you're saving, does that still make it a deal-breaker, or is it?
I don't know, I would have to see what, what payment's at, or whatever, but, um, you know, I, that's saying that the existing homeowners would let us use their private drive.
Yeah.
We would not, we have not talked to them about that, and there could be an expense there, too, so...
You know, to, to press pause on this for just a second, is this area, if, if it's not buildable now, when we have people who have come through with plans, and they want to be there, is it ever gonna be buildable, or is it just always gonna be a field?
Where?
Here.
Well, that's Molnar.
No, I'm talking right here, if, if we say we can't do it unless they pay for their own road, um, and will this ever be developable?
That's up to them, cause these, this is the, the house lot.
I, yeah, I know, I'm just saying if we say, these are the rules...
He's asking if, if Carl could ever sell it, which one, at the finance committee?
No, he's talking about your, the south side of your lot.
No, I'm talking about theirs, like if, if...
Right here.
If we turn this down, because of our, our ordinances, um, we would have to wait for somebody to come in and say, "We're willing to build our own road", right, that's, that's really the, that's the, what we're hanging on.
Which is what, when they built north of Evergreen, Viking,
Mm-hmm.
When they, you know, there, there was in the plan for that,
Yep.
They had the access, and the developer then has to put in all the roads.
Yep, yep.
Which is the only way you can do it. I mean, unless we all have buckets of money sitting in our back pocket where we can pay for all these things, but...
I wish I did.
No, okay, yeah, I was gonna say, I left my bucket at home. But yeah, so that's why I was, you know, with that, other developments right on the east side there.
Right.
But even then, you know, and I've driven up there, the only way to otherwise get down to seventeen is to go through whatever the burnt-out garbage building was, and straight back up to where Gemini is, and extend that road up, and then have an east-west road going there. But that, that would be, you know, what we'd, what we'd ask a developer to do, who, who has money to do that. But here,
Just two houses.
That little service road
Mm-hmm.
would cost a fortune to, to pave, and then, as you say, the driveway's gonna cost big bucks to pave, and, and if it, you know, that's the problem with living in the city, as opposed to, if you were out in the country, you know, our farm's got a gravel road out there, uh, but it's in the city, and if you're in the city, then you get stuck with paved.
Was the fact that, that you saw it was an easier access to water and sewer, was that one of the reasons that this presents itself right-of-way?
No, I think it's, I think it's the fact that it's in town, and they're tucked up against the hill, it's private, um, we wanna be in town, but we don't wanna be in the neighborhood with all kinds of neighbors. I think that spot was picked for the privacy purpose.
Boy, I haven't been, you guys have been banging this around for a while, um...
Okay, so, would you be willing to look at that other option?
We're gonna look at all options, like I said.
We'll just table this now, and, uh, bring that back, and, uh...
That's a great idea.
I just, I guess I don't wanna move on the other, on the other one, on the other option.
I was gonna say, go find a developer to develop everything east of you, and run more roads for you.
I know, like I said, though, that's...
But then you, then you lose, yeah.
Yeah.
Privacy is pricey.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Is this, I, I know that this drawing of the plan says two houses, didn't the plan in the, say, three, one?
Point two.
It's just two?
Two houses, there's gonna be other lots that are created by this, by this replat, but there are existing homeowners or businesses that are, have expressed some interest, can't say for sure or not, so there's gonna be two new homeowners back there, two new people moving into this area, potentially, it's not like we're bringing five houses back, it's gonna be two.
I thought it said that one for each of you, and then one for Leon, but no, just landowner?
He owns, he owns the Molnar house, the Molnar house, he just wants to buy that lot next to it, that one next to it.
Got it, got it. I'm not trying to, I mean, the idea of if there were other houses and other people to share the load with paving the road, but then you, you know...
Then you lose your, yeah. Okay. So let's, let's stay with that, see if, what you can dig up there, and then we'll move on from there. Agree on that? Sort of?
Yeah, this is just discussion tonight, so just table it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Table it.
Yep.
I just have one quick point, thank you, Matt.
Yeah?
I just have one quick point, I was listening, Dr. Carl and I were out talking with, uh, and the mayor walked by, and I just thought it was kind of interesting, I said, you know, I said, "John, what I don't understand is", I said, "Yes, we're asking the city for something here, we're asking for some give and take here", and, uh, and I said, "You know, much", and I know you guys don't like hearing about it, but the apartment building, I don't know what it's called, but the apartment building, I said, "They asked for give and take, and you gave it to them", and he said, "Yeah, but that's nineteen million dollars, Leon", and it just hit home, it's like, "Really?", so the value of what we say as taxpayers is based on the value of our property, and I, I just, I took that as a real slap in the face.
Well, you, you, you used that same point to us.
Yeah, I did, but, but that's what I'm saying, it's, you know, it's, they're not even paying taxes, yet, they will someday, we'll pay taxes from day one, but it's, it just, it just kinda hit me that, really, so that's what we're boiling it this down to, is the, the value of the dollar, as to the value of who we are as citizens.
Thanks.
Curious how you can kind of bend and twist for something like that, but not for something as simple as a driveway?
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
I was just wondering how you could bend and twist a little bit for the apartments, but you can't bend and twist a little bit for a single driveway?
They don't have a gravel driveway.
No, but they have all those other variances that they're getting, and all that, it's just, I'm just curious why, how that's acceptable, when, when we're trying to build two houses, we're just getting shot and...
Okay, so, if, if, if we allow that for you guys, what are we supposed to tell the next people that walk in, because they're waiting outside?
You know, look at their, look at their case then individually, every case individually.
So each time, so we don't have to have ordinances or anything?
No, you have, you have an ordinance as a baseline.
For what?
Your ordinance is your baseline of what you want to accomplish, and then everybody else, in, every instance that you deal with, from the city's perspective, is not gonna match your ordinance, I mean, that's just, everybody's different that way, so, so use your ordinance as a baseline, and that's acceptable, because I will say, I, you, you cannot thrive and succeed here without ordinances, but use that as your baseline, and then everybody else, because what we're asking for is one thing, what those people are asking for might be something different, but how do you make it all work?
That's right, I think, I think we've got it...
That's your challenge, honestly, Steve, that's your challenge,
Yep.
is, is making it all work, and, and it's like, we all have value here, um, and God bless you, because you guys are in the position of a completely non-appreciated job, but it's like, use your ordinance as the baseline figure that, what you have to deal with, and then know that on the north side of town, there's one issue, on the south side of town, there might be another issue, it's like, how do we make this all work, how do we blend this to make it work? Because the bottom line is, I mean, we, in, in a city like this, none of us are leaving this town because we love it here, but holy smokes, the taxes are killing us all, so it's, you know, what do we do, we, we do it, you know, that's your challenge, is bringing industry, bringing housing, and how do you balance that, but it all works out the same, I mean, you've gotta bring, you've gotta do what you can to salvage the tax base you have, and then also, at the same breath, give TIF, I get it, I've done it before, because that will eventually be there to, to help underline all of this thing you're dealing with, I'm, I'm a one-hundred percent supporter of TIF, but that's seven, ten, twelve years down the road, and I think in this, it's seven, um, but God bless you for that, but it's, you know, you gotta make everything else work, too.
Okay. All right, so table this discussion till we get some answers on that other option. Anything else to come before us tonight? You guys wanna make a motion adjourned?
So moved.